I'd like to call this meeting of. Before we do anything, could everyone please turn their volume all the way down? And that way we can avoid echoes. Looks like we're good. All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education to order. Here at seven oh four. Our secretary is not here, so I'll call the role. Joe. John. I'm here. Angela. Alex. Justin. Jen. Lisa's not here. Jane. Julie.
Here.
Pete. Mary. So we have eleven. Out of twelve. Okay. All right. At this point, I'd like to. With. Consent move up on the agenda. Our consideration of our action item number one to consider if approved, the field trip to Quebec City, Quebec. In February. So does anyone have an objection to that? Without objection, I will. I'd like to move that up now. So Mrs. Perel can have a chance to do it and not have to sit here all night. No worries. Sure. If you can give us the short version, that would be good.
Quebec for a nice experience of Francophone culture. And authentic experience. A couple of things have changed. And usually we go during Carnival, which would be, I think, February second through fifth this coming winter. A couple of things have changed due to COVID now that things are opening up again. They've done away with the host program, so students would not be staying with the host family, which was a real disappointment. So we would have to keep in mind that these children would be staying at hotels, which means that we would want to fold in the price of hall monitors. I'm very overprotective and I'm also very savvy because I have. You know, teenagers in my classroom, but also they've really instituted a practice now instead of people choosing what kind of travel insurance they want. They folded it into the basic package. So there are a lot of things that are always variables depending on how close you get to the time of departure. How many people are involved in the program? But. Unless it were a case of a death in the family or a medical emergency, parents could probably anticipate getting about seventy five percent of their monies back if something came up and students weren't able to participate. But I've been dialoguing with our travel agent. We worked with her for years and she also gave me a contact number for anybody, board members or parents who had questions about the finer print of the insurance issues. But I would like to go ahead and send out some letters of. Introduction and, you know, to kind of generate interest now before our summer starts. So kids can mow lawns and start saving money and do some babysitting and then also so that we can hit the ground running come September and get this on the books.
Do you have an estimate of about what it's going to cost or an idea?
It varies with enrollment. It can. I'm saying twelve hundred dollars because I'm taking a very cautious side and thinking that we might only garner interest with about eighteen to twenty. But last time we had twenty seven kids and because we've had to put it off for a couple of years, I'm getting a lot of students asking me, when are we going to Quebec? I have a feeling we'll go well beyond that number, but I don't want to promise those numbers. So it can come down below a thousand. And that's what we've paid in the past. We do also look for grants. We wrote a grant application last time. We do spaghetti dinners and we raise monies in the fall to kind of offset some of the expenses.
Well, I hope you can get a goodly number of people to go. It's a wonderful trip. My daughter, who graduated from here with the class of twenty nineteen, went on the trip and had a marvelous time.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it really, really is an amazing trip. Absolutely. Well, good. Any further questions? All right. At this point, I would accept a motion to approve the field trip to Quebec City, Quebec, Canada on February two, twenty twenty three through February five, twenty twenty three for grades eight to twelve. Motion is there second? Moved and seconded. Further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining? I see none opposed or abstaining, so it is unanimous eleven to nothing.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. All right. We will now move on to the recognition of our Teacher of the Year, Kathleen Brooks.
All right. Well, it is with great pleasure that I get to announce our Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three as Ms. Kathleen Brooks. For those who are not aware of this remarkable educator's career, I would like to highlight some ways that Kathleen has really shown why she's Teacher of the Year material. So Kathleen has is not only dependable, but she is someone that people seek to collaborate with. She's often found laughing, laughing in her classroom with the students as she not only provides joy, but finds joy in that experience. She does bring joy to everyone who she's around. Kathleen's talents have allowed her to teach at various grade levels, both at fourth grade, third grade, and really anything in between, including summer school. She has a can do attitude with any challenge. And I will tell you, one of my personal moments was remembering when it was we were returning from remote learning the summer of twenty twenty to in person learning. And it was starting with our summer school program. And to know that Kathleen is always one of the first people to step up. That she's willing to sit there and take a risk if it means that our kids are going to have a better experience. And so not only is it just about providing that opportunity, but it's also about opening up opportunities for enrichment. So when we say let's try invention convention, she raises her hand and says, pick me. When we say how about a little bit of a science fair, she says, pick me. When we say how about STEM activity, she said, I'll do it. So not only does she do this, but she manages to smile while she's selling a house. I mean, there, there's a lot of resilience in this woman that I think we all should just bottle, but she never lets anyone see her challenges. She makes certain that all the attention, care and focus are on children. Kathleen is a role model for strong work ethic and intelligence. And as we put the spotlight on her, it is at the same time that she's riding off into the sunset. Because Kathleen's not returning in twenty twelve next year. But she has certainly put an exclamation point on a tremendous career here. And so at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kathleen Brooks.
This is an amazing district and it's a very hard one to leave. I've taught from coast to coast. And this one will leave an imprint on my heart. I'm just grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brooks. You have done a wonderful job and we will be really sorry to see you go. But don't forget, this is where we are. All right. We will now move on to the introduction of the director, our new Director of Agroscience.
All right. Well, board members. You provided us the challenge to make sure that the Director of Agro- Agroscience for our new program is highly qualified, strategic in nature and has a proven track record of success. Because we know that our Agroscience Academy deserves the best. And I can tell you what we have is a gentleman who comes highly recommended, who has proven in his work that he can provide and deliver on those high expectations our community has for this program. I want to introduce Tyler Kriens. He has been Nanawog's Agroscience Department Chair and right now is ready to take on the Director role at Chapag. His work in aquaponics has been recognized statewide. Additionally, Tyler has introduced the Farm to Table Program in Region fourteen. And he promises to exceed what he's done for success in past years. Because we have given him the finest resources and facilities here at Chapag. But at this time, it is with great pleasure that I introduce Tyler to the Region twelve community. Tyler.
Thank you, Megan. Amazing introduction, I must say. Thank you guys all for having me. You know, it's funny, I didn't even know where the restroom was when I got here, but I find myself every evening thinking of ways of what I'm going to do July first, when I, when I start over here. And it's very, very exciting. Such a new program and, you know, I've been involved with the, the machine that is Nanawog High School for eight years now. And I have seen the inner workings of a successful program and I really, I'm chomping at the bit to come over here and do my best here to get Chapag to where it really can be. I've been there eight years and, you know, Megan stole some of my thunder tonight here, but you know, the, I'm really proud of some of the stuff that we've been able to do with the other ag teachers over at Nanawog and including Farm to Table and you know, I, my excitement is, it's hard to contain at this point. So thank you guys again for having me. I look forward to working with all of you guys in more detail and thanks, thanks again.
Okay. At this point, we'll move on to public comment on agenda items. Is there any member of the public? Can I have the gallery screen back? Why it won't do that? I know I can't make it do it. Yeah, this is not a usual format. Oh, there it is. Thank you. All right. I couldn't see anyone. That was the problem. Okay. So is there, are there any members of the public who wish to address us on any item on our agenda this evening? Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I didn't see him back. Could you come up to the mic, up to the podium, please? And also if you would tell us who you are.
I'm sure many of you remember my son Ryan and I. My name is Victoria Salem. This is Ryan Salem. It's a pleasure to see you all in person. I have something of concern I would like to talk about, but first Ryan would like to.
Hi. First of all, I thought I should say that. These are for you, so I hope you don't mind if I just come over.
We'd like to thank you for everything that you've done for the Chapag family. And for everything for believing in so many people, so many programs and everything. And it's it's such a great loss for you to be leaving our family. And we just want you to know how much you're loved, how much you're appreciated and how much you're going to be missed. So thank you for all that you've done for everyone. Thank you. So on my concerned note, I was here last week for a meeting in the guidance office. And when I sat down, the guidance counselor opened the window. And I realized that we're on the ground level. And there wasn't a screen on the window. Given what's been going on in our country recently. It was very concerning that there were no screens. No protection. Anybody can open that window, whether it's locked or not, everyone finds a way to do things. Anybody can open that window, climb right in and get into the school. I am also an educator in the Danbury Public Schools, so we always have one eye open, one ear open. And it was very concerning to me to see that. So I would ask that you reassess the security of the school. Put screens on windows where there are none. And make sure that our staff and our students are safe at all times. I'm not saying that there, that there is something negative going on. I'm not saying that they're not doing their job here. But as an educator myself, it was very concerning to see on a ground level, there were no screens and there was no protection.
So sorry, I want to just let you know. One of our projects is a new window project.
Fabulous.
And I will tell you, and it was done, there was an attention done given to the security aspect. So timing is perfect. I'm glad you are looking at how to keep our kids safe. And please know we're doing the same.
Thank you.
Bring some, some safety.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. Is is there anyone else who has a comment? Member of the public who has a comment on something on our agenda this evening? I don't see anyone in the room. If I'm missing you, please stand up and wave your hands at me. And I don't see anyone online. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on our consent agenda tonight or the Board of Education minutes of May twenty third? The special meeting of May sixteenth, the policies of thirty one hundred Board Budget Procedures and Line Item Transfers thirty three twenty, purchasing and thirty one ninety seven, or thirty ninety one thirty seven, advanced placement enrollment. Does anyone wish to take any of these items off the consent agenda for further discussion and action? I am not hearing any. So those items will be adopted. All right. We're going to move on to the year in review, twenty twenty. Oh, do we want to take a break now? You're right. Let's, let's do that. Why don't we take a, let's, let's have a brief recess here while we can. I see we have some refreshments and good. Sorry about that. Meeting back to order. And at this point, it's now, is now time for the year in review, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. We'll start with Ben Allen's, another Ben Allen production here. Outstanding. Okay. Miss Pelle.
Yeah. Is the mic on?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. You'll have to bear with me. I'm fighting laryngitis, so my hope is that my voice will remain. If not, I might signal our superintendent to come on up and rescue me. So let me talk a little bit about Booth Free and Burnham Schools. This school year has been a very busy and productive one. The staff and I began the year with developing our school's success and climate plans. Our school's success plan identified areas of focus which included reading and math, as well as engagement in three of the principles of learning. Accountable talk, clear expectations and academic rigor in a thinking curriculum. Our climate plan led us to develop themes for the school year in each building. Our themes, one unity, the other one seasons of our best selves, focused on acceptance, kindness, inclusion and community. In October, we celebrated Unity Day by recognizing and supporting others who have been hurt or harmed, focusing on treating others with kindness, becoming more accepting of people's differences and helping to include those who are left out. Other celebrations throughout the year have helped our students develop an understanding of the world around them. Students have learned about other cultures during a world tour. Students explored a variety of countries such as Ecuador, Poland, India, South Africa and Brazil. Students learned about each country, its culture through text, videos, making crafts, singing songs and playing traditional games. Our schools celebrated and honored Dr. Martin Luther King Junior with a book share, A Book Share, The Undefeated by Quan Alexander. Classrooms had discussions of the impact of Dr. King's speeches to bring about change. Black History Month was an ongoing pledge to promote diversity. We honored the contributions of African, African Americans throughout our nation's history. Grades four and five completed individual choice research writing projects of someone who made an impact on both our country and the world. In addition, great appropriate texts were, were shared such as The Colors of Us, Just Ask, Be Different, Be Brave, Be You, A Ride to Remember and Separate is Never Equal. In art classes, student and students embrace the power of words by developing quotes that reflected students' commitment to embrace differences with corresponding images depicting the quote. Lastly, our schools will celebrate Juneteenth with a book study using a variety of grade specific texts such as Juneteenth for Maisie by Floyd Cooper and All, All Different Now, Juneteenth, The First Day of Freedom by Angela Johnson. In an effort to continue to strengthen our school community, Booth Free and Burnham Schools have continued the responsive classroom approach to teaching and learning to foster safe, challenging and joyful classrooms and schools. We understand that teachers and students crave a certain amount of predictability and routine in the school day, especially at the start of the day. Every morning, teachers and students engage in a morning meeting. The format of morning meeting is predictable, but there's always plenty of room for variation and change. And it reflects the style of individual teachers and groups and sets the tone for respectful learning and trust. Our morning meetings have motivated our students by addressing two human, human needs. The need to feel a sense of significance and belonging and the need to have fun. It merges social, emotional and intellectual learning. Booth Free and Burnham Schools are integral parts of our communities. Awareness of and involvement in their own communities nurtures our students while fostering authentic connections and altruistic activities. By making sure our students regularly experience the satisfaction of helping others, we help them develop their own sense of responsibility and integrity. Our schools actively partner with many community organizations to enhance learning for all. We embrace a wide range of stakeholders, including family and community based organizations such as the Women's Center of Greater Danbury, fire departments, our libraries, Roxbury Conservation Commission, Roxbury Bridgewater Garden Club, local land trusts, environmental groups and the Northwest Conservation District. The Roxbury Bridgewater Garden Club, the Roxbury Conservation Commission and the Northwest Conservation District serve to beautify our grounds and to promote caring for our environment. Teaching our children about plant life, either in the community gardens or within our newly installed rain garden at Booth Free School, extends learning in the life sciences for our students. The Principles of Flight, sponsored by the Roxbury Conservation Commission in collaboration with the Minor Memorial Library, offers our students a chance to explore STEM concepts regarding the amazing forces of flight. Our many local experts serve as guides for our students exploring their natural environment. These community led opportunities lead our students to engage in learning experiences where they can use their problem solving and critical thinking skills outside the classroom walls. In addition to our community partnerships, our Booth Free and Burnham students find many opportunities to give back to others. This year, the students collected food for their town's local food pantry. They painted kind rocks and scattered them around their communities and along their travels. Our Student Council members sponsored a PJ Day for Kids. Proceeds were sent to the Connecticut Children's Medical Center to support children battling cancer. And as the war in Ukraine broke out in March, our students created signs and sunflower drawings to post around their towns to show their empathy and support for the, for the world community. Students and families also participated in many fundraising efforts to support Ukraine. It must be noted that Booth Free School raised nine hundred and two dollars and Burnham School raised eight hundred and twenty six dollars and fifty cents in the district's fundraising initiative. All proceeds were sent to the Ukraine Red Cross. The seniors of Bridgewater and Roxbury are special to the students in our schools. During holidays and important events, the children often reach out with cards, pictures or letters. Partner, partnering with our state representative Cindy Ferrison. This year, students decorated Christmas trees, made and shared holiday and winter cards, valentines and beautiful heart wreaths. Our students and seniors look forward to these traditions throughout the year. Engaging in actions with the purpose to lift other spirits brightens many days at school and helps our students to see how simple acts of kindness benefits, benefits us all. Our schools are proud of the many recognitions and accomplishments. Our very biggest is the U.S. News and World Report recognition of Booth Free School named Best Elementary School twenty twenty two. The staff and I are very proud of this recognition and I applaud our school community for, for their ongoing dedication and hard work. It must be noted too, that although Burnham did not qualify due to their size, I too am proud of their status. Ninety percent of the students scoring at or above. Booth Free and Burnham Schools are surely shining stars. Other recognitions this school year include the Governor's Summer Reading Challenge with a hundred percent in both schools. Throughout the year, students were chosen and recognized for the following: Connecticut Kid Governor Local Winners, Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Contest Local Winners, Invention Convention Local Winners, and we had one student who received a, a science award with her invention. Six students from each school were recognized by the Hartford Six students from each school were recognized by the Hartford Yard Goats and Pro Health Physicians for Most Improved and were able to attend a Hartford Yard Goats game with their families. Elementary Celebration of the Arts and the Elementary Leadership Conference. The staff and I are always proud of our students and enjoy seeing them shine in many opportunities offered. Lastly, we completed Burnham School's Ben's Bells Tree mural. It is stunning, and if you haven't seen it, please stop by to take a look. An anonymous donor provided us with the remaining funding needed, and the staff and I are so very grateful. Students had crafted tile pieces and have painted them. They were fired and were ready for installation. Our school community was thrilled to have community members participate in the installation. Finally, I wish to thank the board, Superintendent Megan Bennett, my colleagues, staff members, and community members for my 18 years of service within Region 12. I have been blessed to have had the opportunity to work in such a caring, compassionate, and amazing environment. Although I'm excited about my next adventures, I will dearly miss what I've come to know now as my second home. I leave, though, with many fond and wonderful memories, and I will should keep them in my heart forever. So, thank you, and I didn't cry.
Ms. Judd.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to highlight Washington Primary School. Over the past two years, the pandemic has affected each of us in different ways. Although that was the case, the WPS school community stayed focused on our students, our families, and on shared commitment to building a safe, caring, and high-achieving learning environment. In the midst of all the challenges, we gained a unique sensitivity toward one another and a willingness to forge ahead and take turns leading when necessary. This incredible bond supported the optimism that permeated our work at the school year. With clarity in our goals, we set a course of action to reinvigorate our school through re-engaging our students, our families, and our community. Instructurally, we focused on practices that caused students to partner in the learning process. Teachers made sure that every lesson had a clear learning target with success criteria so that students knew the expectations for achievement and could assess their progress using feedback from peers and their teachers to make improvements and to set new goals. Teachers also studied the use of effective questioning and taught students how to question themselves and others. Most importantly, students learned to have productive discussions using accountable talk structures to explore concepts, themes, and to solve problems. This work was supported with training made available by the District on Accountable Talk Practices through the Institute for Learning. As a result of all these efforts, students have become leaders of their own learning, applying effort, asking questions, learning together, and completing tasks with greater independence. I just brought here a little chart as our school climate committee set goals. We wanted to make sure that our students began to see themselves as leaders of their own learning. And so, the team developed aspects to help encourage students to begin to think about how they are engaging in learning. So, attributes such as learning together, applying effort, asking questions, and doing the job. And so, these pieces were developed by the team, and then students were introduced to them by using a teacher of what each one looks like and sounds like in the classroom, and then they would self-assess whether or not they were doing that. So, this was really a lot of work, and students can, you know, basically, you know, see themselves as leaders of their own learning. And that was also part of our theme this year of Tales. I know I spoke about that at another meeting where one of the aspects was L for leader and learner. So, that was something that was really important to them. Collaborative learning increased, and students were transferring knowledge and skills to a wide range of learning opportunities in all disciplines. Science was especially impacted as we were able to reintroduce shared equipment and hands-on experimentation. In addition, coding with our elementary teaching consultant, Betsy Mitten, taught K-5 students the key concepts using Scratch Junior as well as programming robots, dash, and dot. Maker Space opportunities also became more available. Students learned how to create iMovies, use circuitries, and solve challenges such as creating the fastest vehicle with minimal materials and changing variables. But the real magic actually happened when we re-engaged our families and our community. Most recently, we have been able to invite our parents and community organizations into our school. This was especially true during our annual Green Week. Green Week is a week of activities focused on protecting and preserving our environment. We typically have one morning that is a choice-based morning where students pre-select a topic of interest. Ten sessions were available this year and included such topics as beekeeping, electric vehicles, monarch butterflies, endangered Connecticut animals, oil spills, and more. Many sessions were developed and led by parents. We were also excited to have visits from the Sharon Audubon Society, Ripley's Waterfowl Conservancy, the Institute of American Indian Studies, and a bat rehabilitator. Denise Orturey from the Judea Garden also visited and shared the history of the garden and with students planted vegetable seeds for the community garden. Several weeks later, students in first and second grade visited Judea Garden and transplanted those plants into the community garden for use over the summer. Other activities were integrated throughout the week such as planting flowers at the town hall and visiting an electric car at the charging station in the depot. One impressive activity organized by parents in conjunction with the Washington Environmental Council was building bat houses for Steve Brock. Students used step-by-step instructions and tools to build seven bat houses. All the learning from these sessions were presented on signs like a story walk around our Riverwalk, and parents and community members were able to go and visit and take note of what we learned. One of our greatest accomplishments this year was to be able to start our school garden. Staff members and in-house gardeners Chrissy Gorbaki, Brooke Faison, and Jenny Bog spearheaded this project, teaching students about seeds and the importance of gardens to one's health and environment. They started seeds from various vegetables in February that grew in our light garden in our library and then were transplanted recently outdoors. Students in fourth and fifth grade were super excited that they were able to build the raised beds, while the other grades used Bucket Brigade to fill the beds with soil, which was quite fun to watch. We are grateful to the Village Improvement Society for donating the funds for our garden beds and to Scott's Landscaping for donating all of the soil. So, with intention, WPS shifted energy this year towards strengthening teaching and learning, emphasizing the learner as an active partner, and creating new opportunities for families and community partnerships. We start our year with optimism and a focus on building a community of learners who care for one another and strive to achieve their personal best. I think in reflection, we are proud of our efforts and will continue to strategize for continuous improvement. So, thank you for allowing me just to share a little bit about our experience at WPS. And if there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Shels and Mr. Croft. Is Mr. Croft here? Oh, he's not. Just Mr. Shels, okay.
Good evening to the board. Glad to see you all, I'm glad to spend some time together tonight and gratified to be able to talk about some of the accomplishments of the faculty and students at Chapag this year. First, I can say that our year began, of course, trying to welcome students back in safe ways to normal and rigorous learning, in-person learning, which in time happened. And our focus has been on continuing to develop student-centered classrooms where students learn actively, hands-on, and where they come to see the disciplines they're studying as ways of thinking that impart portable skills that they can use to solve real problems rather than lists of facts to be known or memorized. And part of that was our effort to, our continuing effort to increase meaningful assessment at the school so that teachers come to see assessment and develop assessment for learning rather than for ranking or sorting students. So, refocusing conversations around grades to be rooted in what students need to learn and giving them the time and the practice and the feedback to truly learn was a big part of our activity this year. Those big philosophical things said, there are points of pride that I want to tell the board about. First, dealing with teaching and learning in the arts across our campus and across various disciplines. We saw the return of music and theatrical rehearsals and performances, including a fall play, a spring musical, and various band and choir concerts. And we saw the return of in-person science labs and hands-on learning in science. Our chorus sang at Radio City Music Hall. The Library Media Center is hosting a book tasting event where, set up like restaurant tables, they were here earlier today, they're gone now, with various book choices to sample. The high school band competed in the Great East Festival in Massachusetts. Math department inaugurated the Chapag chapter of the Mu Alpha Theta National Honor Society in math with 27 new members, and it's not just about math. Service is a key, and they are tutoring and helping students in the community. Local author Sergio Misana spoke with students about his work on climate change. The AgriScience Academy held a major field trip to Indianapolis, supported by this board for an FFA convention that transformed many of our students. The Model UN Club was selected to represent the USA at Harvard, at the Harvard Model UN, and several students from Chapag were commended with awards. Nineteen students participated. We held the World Affairs Forum in partnership with the Judy Black Park, and Chapag students delivered sophisticated policy and position statements to a large and appreciative audience. I've developed a new African-American and Latin American studies class in line with new state guidelines. There was a whole summer read at the beginning of the year where students from all grades met with one another to engage in book conversations, and middle school students focused on themes tailored to their grade levels. Students submitted pieces to the Young Writers Celebration. The AgriScience Academy led an in-school field trip to view the movie Sacred Cow, which helps students explore and talk with an expert about safe, sustainable, healthy food choices. Middle school is expanding its money and sales to teach students about the economy. Our school welcomed a Holocaust survivor to speak with our middle school students as a guest speaker after they read books in literature class about the Holocaust. We've seen the reopening thanks to the support of this board and our superintendent of our planetarium, piloting an astronomy club, training staff to operate the equipment and to have our students benefit from it. The purchase by the superintendent of SLU licenses that let our students gaze through real telescopes online and cultivate their love of astronomy. And there's initial activity progress being made in this area by Mr. Hermans and some of our students. Our fine artists did amazing work. So many were honored for different awards across our state. The AgriScience student led our Congresswoman Johanna Hayes on a tour of our facilities and discussed policy with her along the way. That was an amazing day. The Spartan Club worked on sportsmanship and character-building activities with elementary students, and Chapag PE teachers supported several unified sports games and events. And many, many, as always, many wonderful senior projects were presented to the community to great acclaim. Points of pride in athletics, the Berkshire League Sportsmanship Award. We won the sportsmanship award for the Berkshire League in golf, swimming, boys' basketball, and baseball. We had three all-state, one academic all-state, and 27 all-league athletes, one league championship in boys' tennis, and the softball team made it to the class-esque quarterfinal game. And then overall, the structural advances for the benefit of our school, we saw the expansion of math support and intervention with a math interventionist SAT class and NHS tutors. Same for reading. We saw the introduction of accountable talk in our school through, under the leadership of Superintendent Bennett and Dr. DeBrito and our administrators, moving towards improving the quality of student discourse in our classrooms through accountable talk. Our counselors and our agriscience teachers and students led incredibly successful expos and open houses with tours and project demonstrations and outreach efforts, leading to the recruitment of 60 incoming agriscience freshmen for next year. And the faculty and parents and students in our school researched and developed a new schedule that we're going to be able to use next year for the benefit of our students. So, I was really gratified to witness the efforts and the heart and the soul and the brains and the growth of Chapag this year, and I thank you for your time and listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Shels. We'll now go on to recognize that we have the resignation of a board member. Do you want to talk about it? Do you want me to?
I can talk, and then if you want to fill in, but before I do, I just, I hope each one of our administrators knows how amazing the opportunities are that you give to our kids. You don't hear those lists in other districts, and you sit and listen to, you reflect on every special event that happened, and there were so many, and you made them so special. So, thank you for region 12 amazing. So, it's another wonderful person that we're going to recognize because we do have a Roxbury board member who is resigning. And so, it's really that next emotion that I share, that Lisa Roush's resignation from the Board of Education. She apologizes for her absence tonight, but her son is graduating St. Andrews College in Scotland, so we'll give her a pass. But she has been an amazing partner, coming up with some challenging ideas, providing some insightful questions, offering her own experience. And Lisa's departure will allow her to pursue a new career opportunity, and we know that we will miss her on the board. I know that the board wishes her well. And I have been in talks with Patrick Roy. He's going to partner with Greg as far as how an appointment process for the new board member from Roxbury is going to happen, but interested Roxbury residents should reach out to their selectmen accordingly. But I think we can all admit we're going to miss Lisa, and I know she's really, she's been a force to be reckoned with, and we've enjoyed that. Anything you want to share, Chairman?
I was just going to say that I have known Lisa for a long time, since our kids were small together, and she has been a tremendous asset to this board, to this community, and to our schools, and we are going to wish her well. I just wish she weren't, if she were here tonight, so we could, we could tell her right to herself, but hopefully she'll get our word, and we'll hope to see her and look forward to seeing her again soon. Okay. Now, COVID. Your favorite thing to talk about?
Way to bring down the party. But yes, we definitely saw a spike after April vacation. Anyone who is tracking our numbers or just the sheer amount of emails you are getting from me on a regular basis, we had 106 infections since April break. Absolutely, that tested and shared the information with us. I do want to thank our community because there were two occasions in which we shifted from recommending masks to requiring them. And so, I know Booth Free, it was the disruptor that needed, and we saw healthier conditions afterwards. And I know I became no one's favorite when the last week of school I put masks on our seniors, but we wanted to make certain that every child had the opportunity to cross that graduation stage. And so, I know it's a cause, but I will tell you, it is to, again, the credit of this community and our students who recognized they wanted to get everybody across that stage, too, and we couldn't let Evan want to be sick. Perfect attendance, the perfect attendance, his entire school career, entire school career. But to say that everything that we've done and all of the efforts that were made, it wasn't to just be difficult, there really was the end in mind, and we thank everyone for helping us get through that and to that. We were able to have remarkable ceremonies. We've seen all of the celebrations come back into play, and we were able to do it safely. And so, again, a credit to everyone here and their planning. So, as far as, again, you can go on the website, we continue to maintain our numbers. We will, at the end of the school year, we will stop doing the announcements over the summer. At that point, people should just be vigilant for their own health, but nobody needs to see the emails continuing on that. So, with that, that concludes my COVID report. So, so with that, that concludes my COVID report.
Okay, thank you very much, any questions? All right, we'll move on to reports and recognition, we'll start with the board chair's report. Wow, this is a busy time for us. The month of June is just a tricky thing, and it doesn't make it any better that we have so many transitions going on right now. First, I wanted to call your attention to the fact that next Monday is a federal holiday. This is the holiday of Juneteenth, this is the first time it has been a federal holiday, and it is now a holiday in the state, so everything will be closed. So in any event, I wanted you to, to know about that, and that will add, that will mean that we will have a, a fourth holiday and hopefully a good, I'm sorry, not yet?
Not yet, it actually goes into the federal for October, so we won't, it doesn't necessarily-
It doesn't come here? Not, not for our schools, but we're not going to be open anyway, so, but, you know, in any event, that, that is a new holiday to, to put on our calendar. We've, I had the privilege of attending the Booth Free School Celebration, it was a terrific, terrific event. And it was, it was well done, we had some great student performances, we had some, some, some great, great moments to celebrate that, some, and a visit from our state representative as well. So it was a, it was a great day, and it calls to mind yet another transition, and that is that Mrs. Colella will be leaving us as principal. I think it's probably the best thing, if you were going to pick a time, is the time when your school is the best one in the state. And we, we pity Dr. Rue because things can only go one way from there. But I will tell you, Kathy, you have been here, I can't believe it's eighteen years, but I realize now that I had a kindergartner and a fifth grader in your school when you arrived. And in that period of time, you have been a champion for our kids. You have done nothing short of an amazing job and taken us through transitions in education and, and changes in education during that period of time that I know were challenging. But you've done it in a terrific way, you have been the building leader that we needed, you've been a building leader that has been terrific and has done everything that our kids needed, and you've done it every day. I'm sorry? Well, I, I don't, I, that wasn't my intent, but I, I want you to know how appreciative we are of the hard work you did during a period of change in, in education. I can't remember all of the different changes that went in, in terms of the math curriculum at least once, and, and many others. And yet, you have, you have led your teachers in our schools through it and done it while producing excellence. The, I mean, we are, we are fortunate to have three of the best elementary schools in the state of Connecticut. And it's, it's been your privilege and ours that you, that you've led two of those, and, and you're number one. So you'll always be number one to us, Kathy, thank you so much. We, we, we have other transitions that we'll talk about, another transition that we'll talk about later, but this is a, this is a time of movement in and out. I also had the privilege to attend commencement for the high school. I will tell you that Shels killed it, he was amazing. His, his speech was, was not, you know, was terrific, even though no one laughed at your, your jokes, I did, anyway. But, no, 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 you, it was absolutely terrific, just to see, to see our talented kids and to watch them cross that stage and make a big transition in their lives. This was extremely well-run commencement, I heard nothing but raves from all the people who were attending, all the parents and grandparents who were there, about what a special event it was and how, how well it was run. And, you know, except for the fact that I couldn't find my speech, other than that, it was in good shape. But no, seriously, it was, it was a grand time and a wonderful, a wonderful celebration of our kids. We have middle school commencement coming up on Wednesday, the fifteenth. I, I guess it's middle school, the middle school promotion ceremony, but it's kind of a commencement, it's kind of a rebirth for these kids, they're going to be reborn as high school students. And I urge you all to attend if you can, I'm sorry I didn't, we didn't have a meeting right before graduation for the seniors, I would have, I would have commended you to attend that, please try to come, these are just amazing events, amazing community. And I think you want to be there to, to celebrate our kids as they, as they move on. So that is pretty much my report, it is a, we live in interesting times, so this is certainly the most interesting month I can recall. So with that, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, you're right, so much to celebrate. So we have had some, some interesting conversations, and just I wanted to make certain, I was putting on the board's radar that on June ninth, the town of Washington hosted a hearing on the daycare to be housed at Central Office Building. The proposal was met with overwhelming support, absolutely overwhelming support. But this is the first of many steps that are needed to happen to make certain we're providing this opportunity for our young families in this community. The plan for Central Office is to relocate. There are definitely elements of this plan that are inconvenient. I will absolutely say, this is not where it's a, a natural, you know, it's natural for us to, to go over into Chapag or be absorbed into one of our other buildings. However, the opportunity to provide for our young families, so we're growing our school system, is important. And it is something that is supported by our, our entire staff. But there are a lot of logistics that need to be addressed, and I know things like traffic studies we're going to have to do, safety and security measures, all of those things should be happening. If anybody says to you that, well, it's okay, they're just moving, that's shortsighted. But again, we want to make sure that everybody knows those are all part of what's happening next. So it wasn't just a ready-made, here's what's going to happen. The business proposal, what was shared with the towns, was to really see if there's actually that need to get the voices heard. So more information will follow, but it's important, I do want our board members, please watch this closely, as this is an investment opportunity for that strong foundation to, in words of Pete Dagley, build our base. So other things that are happening across the district, we do have new furniture for our elementary school classrooms that will be put in. And this is a huge thank you to Nicole Grant. Not only did she identify the opportunities, she found ways to capitalize financial investments. And for somebody who always says to me, I, I don't have the educational background, I'm going to say to you, that's a far cry from the truth, Nicole, because you make magic pockets, and it is very impressive, and I think we all feel that benefit. So we have new furniture, some of Chapag is going to get the hand-me-downs from elementary schools, that was very exciting to the elementary staff, like the first time it's happened in reverse. But really, these, these furnitures will allow for more movement in the classroom, to allow for collaborative and separation. So it's, it's a nice transition as we start to welcome back teaming and our students working collaboratively together. So it's a nice post-pandemic situation. I did celebrate phrase number one, identification in Connecticut, and not only just that, we, they were able to celebrate, Kathy, and it really was a remarkable day, and just lots of energy and excitement around that. We have, and you've heard the celebrations from all of our administrators, but also, as we're talking about our state tournament competitions and sportsmanship awards and athletics, there's also the local support in which, on, what was that, on June first, there was a hundred thousand dollars in scholarships that were afforded to our kids. It's okay, and I, I knew you were waiting for me to say it, Don Shels, that's what I figured, you're going to let me have that moment. But it is to say that, when, when people look around, why come to these schools? Because you have opportunities, it paves the pathway of what is beyond. And so, again, remarkable. We've had aloha celebrations, and they all went off beautifully, and graduations, and, and really an amazing farewell. Thank you all, I will tell you, this board did a brilliant idea with marketing, because at this point, every superintendent's going to want to be here, because you're just going to think that that's what happens, is that you get these fabulous parades with all of the kids, but looking out onto the Region Twelve community in its totality with something very special, and thank you all for coming out. So that is my update. Please don't have any questions, because like Kathy, we're holding it together, right? So I want to share with you a couple of appointments that we have. We have been very busy with hiring and making certain, and again, it's a testament to our staff who, in the busiest time of year, are still squeezing in interviews to make sure we have the best people, as we have some retirees, and we want to fit those good shoes. So we welcome Sarah Burns, a special education teacher, Sarah's currently teaching in Boston. She's a native of, I want to say, Southbury, so she's coming home, but one of the reference checks said, you better give her the offer now, because she's going to get swooped up real quick, and so we did. As you've heard, Tyler Kreenz, our new director of Agri Science. Kristalie Donovan, who had been serving in a one-year position, is now the permanent literacy tutor position at Washington Primary. We welcome Margaret Gerth, we call her Margie, as the Agri Science teacher before she was serving as the part-time Agri Science teacher and the operations manager. Now that we've hired the director of Agri Science, the operations manager position goes away. So as we know, we've been building into these moments. We have Kristen Mosier, who was serving in a one-year position at Washington Primary, who will now be permanent elementary position. We also have Vincent Trinketti, Vincent was a point-six PE teacher, he will now be a one-point-oh PE teacher. And Bradley Taylor, who was a point-four ELA teacher, and as you saw in our budget, we are increasing introducing philosophy into our course offerings and marrying that in, and so Brad will now be a one-point-oh. We do have some people who are leaving the district, so we wish Christine Gorbekki all the best as she leaves the literacy tutor position at Washington Primary School. And we also have some transfers happening within the district, so Brooke Fizan, who has served as the library clerk and tech specialist at Washington Primary School, will be going over to the tech specialist position at Booth Free in Burnham. And we know that she's going to continue to be successful in her new role, I know it was hard for her to leave her friends at Washington Primary, but don't worry, we, we'll have tech problems over there too, we'll send her over for a couple of different reasons. But at that point, that completes our list of transfers and leavers and new additions.
Thank you. On to treasurer's report, John, do you have anything for us?
Well, I'll try to speak on. The 2021, 2022 budget is expected to conclude, because on track to conclude with a very healthy surplus, which affords a perfect opportunity to invest in the window project that will be part of the agenda items, I believe it's change, agenda item came to. The window project is expected to cost about five hundred and forty-five thousand. It was put in the budget last year, so, I mean, that's, that's a marvelous opportunity, and especially since during public comment, someone expressed concerns about the windows. And checks were written to the three Region Twelve towns of Bridgewater for one hundred, one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, Roxbury, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and Washington, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. That is the tuition money that is collected and being returned every year to the towns, so it's a wonderful benefit to the towns. Lastly, I want to take this opportunity to thank Megan and wish her a fond farewell from a treasurer's perspective. She was instrumental in, not only for this reason, but for many reasons, but she was very instrumental in her and Nicole in revising and implementing the new budget format for which the region's financial ledger is, is much improved and more understandable. I always marvel that the fact, the other night I sent her an email at eleven PM, and within two minutes, she responded, and I said, Megan, how do you find the time with all that's going on in your life? How do you find the time to, I didn't expect an answer, but she was right there, and she's always there. So farewell, thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll move on to committee reports, the Curriculum Educational Programming Committee, Justin?
Nothing new to report, our meeting tonight was-
Okay, ahead of advance, Joe?
I attended a Zoom Board of Directors meeting on June second. We had to reapprove one of the Head Start selection enrollment priority applications because it did not include SNAP as a form of public assistance, so we just readdressed that. Also approved was a Head Start annual grant application. We also did not make any changes to the Board of Directors slate of officers for the 2022, 2023 year. And we also approved the executive director's evaluation and his contract extension to 2025, so Jeff will be staying on. And there are no meetings in July, next meeting is in August, but I don't have a date for that.
Okay, thank you, John. Finance and Operations, Alex?
Yes. The, John stole most of my thunder here. The, we had a meeting recently, and we reviewed the numbers, and there is going to be a healthy surplus, which will allow us to work with Cherry Hill to get new windows put in. We're still working out the details, I talked with Don earlier tonight about it. It appears that our representative at Cherry Hill has gone on vacation, how dare he do such a thing. We also discussed the Central Office and whether it made sense to transfer or make that the new learning center. And there were some concerns about that. While it was agreed that something needed to be done, there was question whether the Central Office was the best location for it, there, there's some, some issues there. We also talked about solar, and we're, we're looking into whether solar can be done here, and we're waiting for Greenleaf to get back with a proposal for us, and rather than just sort of come in and say they want to do it, to actually give us some hard numbers and, and designs and things of that nature. And that is about it for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Labor negotiations is me, and we have an item on tonight's agenda related to the Chapag Valley Education Association contract discussion. So we'll pick that up later. Strategic Long Range Planning, Julie?
Nothing much, just to say that we did get the information from Richard Lemmons from Long Range Planning to our search firm, so that they'd have that as part of their process. But we have not had a meeting, so that's it for tonight.
Okay, very good. Well, if that's the case, we will move on to new business, superintendent transition steps.
All right, well, I wanted to make certain, everyone knows we're not, we're not just leaving everybody high and dry. As you know, Lori Rodriguez will be the interim superintendent, so obviously she's holding the ship while the board is conducting their search. And her and I have met on a couple of occasions, actually, the latest meeting was today. She recognizes some of the things that are currently in motion already, so we talked about making certain that she's continuing that momentum, and I know that's important to this board. And so her focus, next year, she talked about these-
And so her focus next year, she talked about these on our exchange safety. And she actually talked about a couple of security analysts that she's worked with in Newtown. That we could bring over here to help support, which I, I love knowing that there's that resource that's coming in. Talks about curriculum instruction and making certain, we're looking at this from that understanding by design. And if every dust off their memory banks, that is something that Lori actually introduced to this district was UBD. And so we talked about the next steps, what's happening with curriculum. So she will be putting the focus on, she's gonna continue to work with the IFL. Administrators have great momentum and it's something that our classroom teachers are talking about. It's us putting, you know, you heard Kathy talk about accountable talk. We talked about that academic rigor with Emily. And all of those things are circling around our work with the University of Pittsburgh, so she's gonna continue that. She talked about the block scheduling, making certain that we have professional development for that. And also as we're introducing the new math program at the elementary level. So on June 17th, so on Friday, when we don't have students. Our teachers are all gonna get the preview of these coming attractions. It's going to be setting the stage so that we can go into the summer, if they wanna do any work, they wanna, you know, try to develop any plans. It won't be wasted energies and that's important to us as we then kick off the new school year with a couple of programs. Lori's, you know, we've got the admin retreat already planned out. That cooking class will happen in administrators, so that's already set up and, and good. And you may be better off not having me in the kitchen. So things are moving forward. And so please don't ca, in talking with Dr. Reddick. Her and I will still be working closely together, so I will be remoting in some conversations. So this way again, nothing is gonna falter in the transition. And you know, I'm not changing my phone number when I leave, so we should be good. So I just wanted to make certain people know that efforts are being made to make certain that nothing falters in the transition of leadership, so.
I just have one question, are you keeping both cell phone numbers or? Oh wow, okay, we're gonna pester you. Okay. All right, on to action items. We have taken care of action item number one, so we'll move to action item number two. To consider and if appropriate, approve payment of the Chippewa Valley School windows from the 2021, 2022 budget. Who wants to present this? Alex talked about it.
I was gonna say Nicole and Don.
Yeah, I think John put it pretty well. The, the money's there. Rather than take it out or finance it or take it out of some special fund. I think it makes sense to just put it in the budget and spend the money. Because it's the prudent thing to do. I, I don't know, John, if you agree with me on that. Yeah, I think that, you know, we, the FNO committee came to the feeling, yes. Nicole made a, a good argument for it and it's the way we should go. And that's probably all I've got to say.
Okay, Nicole, you wanna talk about this a little bit?
Sure. What I have presented to the FNO committee was that due to the surplus that we have running at year end. It would be more advantageous for us to pay for the windows, which have already gone out to RFP. The total cost is 624,558. We're running about a million dollar surplus for year end. That may fluctuate a little bit still to the year end, but that's where we are right now. Our original plan was to finance them as part of the bond financing with the other improvements at Chippewa. But it would be in our interest to not have to carry that debt service on that extra funding. When we do go to renew the ban for and replace it with a permanent bond. We won't have to carry such a large bond and then we won't have to carry such a large debt service through the next 10 years. If we were to pay for them now out of the budget surplus.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve payment of the Chippewa Valley School windows from the 2021, 2022 budget?
So moved.
Moves and seconded, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. All those opposed, all those abstaining. Well, it's unanimous, that's 11 votes in favor of it. Okay. Action item number three, to consider if appropriate, approve the school property disposal list with permission for the director of finance to dispose, sell or donate. Identify equipment as appropriate.
So I can share, as we have been in trying to get into better practice and better housekeeping. We are making certain that we are regularly looking at cleaning out our closets and disposing obsolete equipment. Or things that no longer needed or things that maybe donated or purchased. So as you review the list, you will see the items that have been put up there. And in a full disclosure, cause we always do that here. One of the items on the disposal slash to be sold list is my computer. Part of the reason to request buyout of that is that I do need it. When the 10 days between leaving Connecticut and, you know, leaving my post as superintendent. So I still need to do state approvals up through that time. So rather than shipping something back, looking to purchase it out. So I just wanted to make certain I highlighted that because I don't want anybody to think that we're doing anything. That is not transparent in any way.
Nicole, is it, am I missing something or isn't the cost of shipping it back likely to exceed the value of the device? Okay. It's got some mileage on it.
Guess you're shaming my computer.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone have any questions or issues, John? And then Mary.
I'm assuming that most of the items will be donated, however, if, if they are self-sold. Would it be possible to get some kind of a record of what was sold and for how much?
Sure.
Okay. Mary, you had something?
Yes, I just wondered whatever happened with the instruments that were on the list the last time.
It actually, Don Schels, you can certainly chime in, cause I know that you instrumental in the instruments. But the Leo Club stepped in and then they actually sought to have other people even donate their instruments. And it went to, I believe it was in Philadelphia. And which it was a organization that will fix up old instruments and give them to students. Who may be of financial need, who are interested in having the instrument. And so we, we, we heard the please. We actually rallied to get some additional people who would also donate instruments and turned it over to the kids and they made magic.
Perfect.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the school property disposal list as presented to the meeting with permission from the director of finance? To dispose, sell or donate identified. It's moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Well, that's unanimous, so that's taken care of. All right, at this point, I need to add something to the agenda. I need to add another action item to the agenda. And I'm going to recognize. Ms. Stewart.
Yes, well. So we all know we have a fun and fabulous superintendent. And as a parting gift, we felt we had to get something fun and fabulous. So Greg sort of planted a seed and some of us ladies took it from there. And so we have something special to present to you that we would like you to open if it's not too much trouble. No, you have to read the card first, just quickly, because it kinda goes with the theme.
Even though you have been the best darn superintendent ever, Co-Work does not have cards like that. We're giving you the boot. Yeah, notice that bad boy was like intact, we're all set.
Well, Jen gets credit for picking the exact boot, so.
Thank you.
It's from everybody, the entire board, I wanted to make sure to say that.
Thank you, thank you, this is. They are beautiful. I'm just gonna type, these are beautiful.
And, and the little, the little front there is gonna come in handy, knowing their proclivity for.
Is this, is this how I nudge the snakes? This is amazing, this is amazing.
Nicole, we wanna. I'm not gonna say anything, cause there's nothing much left to be said. Other than every kid in this district has had a fierce friend. And a fierce protector. And thank you. Okay. Now, if we can all dry the tears, we have to move on to executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the SVEA contract discussion? A legal matter and the superintendent's evaluation? We're gonna give her an evaluation now. I wasn't gonna do it, but you know, she insisted, John. Yeah, we did, we did, we did number one, approving the Quebec field trip earlier in the meeting. The policies were on the consent agenda. Yeah, so we covered it all. Okay, so do I have a motion to go into executive session for those three items?
So moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, all abstaining, it's unanimous, we will go into executive session.